All righty, I'd like to reopen the Village of Bronxville's Board of Trustees meeting for May 12, 2025, and ask all to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, my mayor's report, it's wonderful, it's all good things this month, so I'm going to treasure this. We opened the farmer's market this Saturday. The market is the second oldest in the county at 24 years old. It's open every Saturday, 8:30 to 1:30, and we even had Congressman Latimer come by, and we did a little ribbon cutting. We have more vendors than ever. It's just incredible. So, rain or shine, we have our farmer's market now through Thanksgiving, until Thanksgiving. Other news, keeping in their 100th anniversary celebration, the Women's Club is having a luncheon this Thursday, the 15th, and I understand they still have places if people would like to join them. Our Green Committee met with members of Lawrence Hospital because we're doing a, Mr. Palmer, what'd you say, a deep dive of energy use in the Village. And besides Village Hall, it's the hospital, Iona, and Bronxville School, and so we're just kind of working with interviewing our colleagues, our partners, and we already worked with Lawrence Hospital, and we're meeting with Iona, I think, next week?
We're working, still trying to finalize that date.
And anyway, our partners, all three partners, who are kind of the high-energy users along with us, are so receptive to working with us.
And I think we're building towards having a kind of a public forum where these big energy users, ourselves, New York Presbyterian, and Iona, the school, can share what they're doing with the community and see where there might be synergies or ideas for, you know, businesses in town or residents to kind of emulate some of those practices that they're doing.
Right, 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 to that point, as the largest institutions, the largest institutions in the Village, the community, generally speaking, may not be aware of the sustainability projects that they've implemented that are unbelievably impressive, that, as the mayor and trustee said, that hopefully the others can emulate, such as the hospital has an impressive rain garden on their rooftop. That was something as part of their addition that they did several years ago that underwent a lengthy review by the villagers planning for it. And they're upgrading their entire HVAC system. There have been, there's a lot of equipment coming in, a lot of upgrades that, and then sometimes we schedule it in the middle of the night, so the delivery's, but all energy-efficient systems, and it's, anyway, so the board was very impressed with what we learned from NYPD, and we're just trying to get that date with Iona as well, so.
Thank you, because there is an end game to this, and the result is to share with the community, telling people how everybody, especially the big users, are trying to cut back on use. We have the annual Senior Class Safety Day over here on the 21st, which is so much fun to see the entire senior class, and they come over and talk to the police department about safety at college, just all different things that might occur at college, and different groups are here, and Village Hall opens it up, the fire department is a partner. Anyway, it's a really nice day, and it's an incredibly educational day. On that same day, from 1:30 to 2:30, thanks to Liza Collier, a resident fourth grader who wanted to do a cleanup day around Bronxville, the entire fourth grade of the Bronxville School is going to, with us providing little quadrants and bags and gloves, are going to help us clean up the village. So, on the 21st, say hi to some of our youngest residents who don't like the cigarette butts near Starbucks, so, so there. That is 1:30 to 2:30 on the 21st, and it was a great effort. She came over, and I said, "Well, come back with a doable idea," and she came back with something, and the school, the great teacher chair, everybody at the school came back to their credit, so we have a game plan, and someone from either the PD, myself, some of the trustees, will be in different groups as we clean up, clean up the village. And then Memorial Day weekend, I don't know all the schedule, and I think you can, I know they have it on the online newspaper, but I get to judge both a bake sale, and they're still looking for entrance, that's on the 23rd, and I think in the world of the Peter Principle, I also judge the dog show, so.
Let me know if you need an assistant for the bake sale.
Might need this, yeah, okay. Last year, we, I did, last year tasted 24 things and went home in a coma. Anyway, yeah, anyway, support the school on that date. And, Mr. Palmer, will you mention, because I don't have the hours, when it's your turn, the school election, because we should mention that to the non-school families, I think it's the 20th, but I don't have the hours. 30th at 4:00 p.m., we're going to dedicate, the working gardeners, in honor of their 100th anniversary in the Village, donated some dogwood trees that used to always be there up by the tennis courts, so we're going to have an official dedication of putting the little, hence the name, it was always called Dogwood Park, and now it's actually going to have dogwoods to deserve, deserve its name. And then, these are all events before our next board meeting, which is why I'm giving you a lot of them. The Bronxville Beautification Council is having their fundraiser, tickets still available, Saturday, the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at a private home. So, this is a season of benefits, fun, all good things, so I just ask you to support, support what you can. Trustees, I know I left things out, so trustee Barron?
Sure. The mayor, trustee Knapp, and I had the privilege of attending the annual library spring benefit on Friday, April 25th, hosted by the Friends of the Library, and obviously in conjunction with the library board, some of them are here tonight. It was very well attended with lots of energy, a lot of newer residents were there and new board members, so it was, it had a lot of excitement. The library was turned into a derby, a theme party with betting on virtual horses. The mayor was most pleased when her horse named the chief, after our esteemed chief of police, won the first race of the evening. Jim, you have to pay attention, he barely beat out my horse, Speedy Jim Palmer, but I dare say Mr. Palmer gave the chief a run for his money.
It was almost a photo finish.
It was almost a photo finish, from behind. The mayor collected her winnings, winnings, and promptly donated them back to the library. But all in all, it was a very fun night, and it was a lot of energy and love for the beloved library, and thank you all to the Friends of the Library and the library board for all that they do for the library, so thank you.
And it was beautiful the way that the patio area was set up with a tent, and that that was really used, you know.
Yeah, really showcased, showcased that space really nicely, and what a, what a great job that is, how beautiful it is. So that's my report, mayor.
Thank you. I will share, the deputy mayor is away on work business, so that's why his chair is empty tonight, so I will go to Ellen.
Okay, so just one thing to add to the list of events that you mentioned, the Green Committee is hosting their annual take-back day on Saturday from 10 to 1:00. They'll have two locations, the mobile shredder will be at the elementary school for all your precious, sensitive documents that you want shredded, and then here behind, Palumbo Place, they are collecting electronics, gently-used clothing, clean-used towels and blankets for animal shelters. Also, I think this is a new one, used sneakers and running shoes, so if you're like my family, I don't even have kids living in my house anymore, but we have accumulated like years of sneakers, so I already have a box together for donating sneakers and running shoes, and then also soccer equipment. So, that's tended to one here at Palumbo Place, and then the shredder at the elementary school parking lot.
And trustee Fredericks?
Thank you, mayor. Although we have our own beloved Memorial Day celebrations on Memorial Day, our friends and neighbors in Tuckahoe and Eastchester have their own Memorial Day program, and they always encourage and welcome folks from Bronxville to participate in their event. Their parade is Sunday, May 18th, with a start time of 2:00 p.m., and it kicks off at the Eastchester Library, and marches sort of in reverse direction from some of the other parades, marches south and then down west into Depot Square where it ends. So that's Sunday, May 18th, at 2:00 p.m., Eastchester Library kickoff, parade goes to Depot Square. The Eastchester veterans, who play such a major role in putting the Eastchester program together, also always have a program, which is a little more serious to commemorate Memorial Day. Typically, it's a commemoration of historical event, a prior World War II battle, or, you know, that for the Korean War. This year, their program is going to be on Thursday, May 15th, at 7:00 p.m., and the program is going to be on the Battle of Fallujah, so a little more contemporary this year. But I've been to some of the programs in the past, and if you're free on the evening of May 15th, and you're in the neighborhood of the Eastchester High School, in their auditorium, the Eastchester Veterans Program will be at that time, and I recommend it. Parade, of course, Sunday at 2:00 p.m. I'll also just mention that we had an initial meeting of folks from the Bronxville Historical Conservancy, the Green Committee, and some Village Hall folks to discuss implementation of the tree planting program, which the board approved last month. There are going to be a lot of details that we're going to need to work out. We'll probably have a report closer to the fall, but for folks who read about it or heard about the last board meeting, that's something that I think we're all very excited about. It includes a very generous grant of $75,000 from the Bronxville Historical Conservancy to support that effort. As one person pointed out, Jack Beerworth, longtime resident, sort of said, you know, so much of just the feeling of being in Bronxville, the atmosphere of being in Bronxville is one of being in a village of tree-lined streets and shades and beautiful trees, and we have just lost a lot of trees, partly just through the passage of time and nature, but this is a way to ensure that we don't miss the boat and that villagers 30 years, 40 years, 50 years from now will get to have a canopy that, you know, no worse than what we enjoy today. Thank you, mayor.
And trustee Knapp kindly reminded me that also, on the 15th, at the Women's Club at 6:00 p.m., thanks to partnership with the Women's Club and Link New York, which is one of our real estate groups over on the West Side, they are having an evening where all the nonprofit organizations, community service organizations, businesses, you name it, are going to have tables at the, at the Women's Club, and there's complimentary food, drink, live music, they're just trying to get people to maybe forge new connections. If you're new to the Village, perhaps volunteer more, perhaps learn about organizations that you don't know about. Anyway, I think it's a great, it's a, an inaugural idea, so you come in and out at 6 to 8, walk around, and, and see what groups we have now, and who needs help, and what kind of help. So, I, I think it's a great initiative on the part of Women's Club and Link New York, and thank you, I wouldn't have wanted to forget that. All right, Mr. James Palmer, Village Administrator?
Thank you, mayor. Just, just to start out, the Memorial Day festivities for the Villages Parade kicks off in Leonard Marange Square at 8:30 a.m. on Memorial Day. So that's Monday, the 26th, 8:30 at Leonard Marange Square is the, the beginning of the ceremonies, and then reflection on our veterans and benediction, and then the parade will kick off no later than 9:00 a.m. and head down Pond Field, so just wanted to emphasize that. All the community groups come out. Mary Ann has been working day and night, night and day, trying to make sure all the groups are there, and that's always a really, always a very special event, fun event, and reflective event, remembering our veterans.
Mary Ann, is even, aren't you going to juggle this year? The jogging juggler this year, yes.
Just make sure everyone has that date on their calendar, May 26th, 8:30 a.m. sharp, Leonard Marange Square, wanted to mention that.
And our grand marshal is Dr. George Yunus, who is a 50-plus-year resident and a very quiet Army veteran, and was an Army doctor for many years, and in his modesty, kept it very quiet. So, we have, we're still having that wonderful connect where we have citizens of great service to the Village and great service to the country, so come out and see Dr. Yunus.
Okay, and mayor, you had asked about the school budget vote, and that is next Tuesday. So, next Tuesday, May 20th, polls are open at the school via the meadow entrance side to the gymnasium from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and this is to vote on the three seats that are up on the, on the school board, and also to vote on the school budget.
And a bond issue.
Inclusive of a bond issue for host of projects. Other items I just wanted to mention, the board just had a site visit this evening up at Duesenberry and Archer to review plans for drainage improvements that the Village is planning on going out to bid in the coming weeks for what we call the Crawford Drainage Basin. Some information on the Crawford Drainage Basin, and what we've been working on for quite some time, are on the Village website under Stormwater Projects. Also, Hamilton Drainage, improvements in the Hamilton, Sussex, Argyle, Sherman area has been ongoing, and the pipe replacement, that one section of pipe down Hamilton is almost done, and then they'll be working on the catch basins at the intersection of Hamilton and Sussex, and several other basins have already been installed, so that's, that's real positive, and hopefully they will be done there in about another month.
We were talking a little bit earlier about any update on the rain events this weekend, and how the, how the catch basin, the new ones, how they did, or, you know, there wasn't a ton of rain, but.
I haven't heard of any issues from this, from this past weekend, so, as they've been working, and even though they're working, they were working on installing the pipe, they were making sure the existing pipe was connected, but, but yes, all the catch basins that have been put in are, are working, so all positive. And on that note, the DPW, it's, you know, it's this time of year, obviously with all the, the growth, the DPW has, the foreman Victor has done an amazing job having a team dedicated to cleaning the catch basins. So, if you see the villagers recently purchased vacuum truck out, it's cleaning all the catch basins throughout the village, working on making its rounds to every location, it's, it's just that important. And we've also had the street sweeper out, removing a lot of debris, so that's very positive. And then, of course, the guys have just been doing an amazing job at, working in all the parks. They most recently, especially with our new hire, Gus, did a great job at edging out all the gardens in the Malpe Park, so that really, all those azaleas and plantings really came in quite nicely there. And of course, the clay tennis courts were recently resurfaced, so that's real positive, those are up and running, just wanted to mention those, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. And we go to the approval of two sets of minutes, thanks to Mary Ann, when she's not juggling. We have a set of executive work session and regular meeting minutes from April 14th, as well as a set from a special budget meeting we had on April 25th, and may I have a motion to accept both sets of minutes?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote.
I was wanting to make a note that Mary Ann and I are working, she's working on updating the Iona Gala in New York City, the write-up, a little bit, so it's going to be tweaked a bit, to reflect more, what, what was that?
Sounds good. Okay, and our first item is a resolution authorizing the Bronxville Public Library's boiler replacement, and I see tonight we have our library director, as well as our library board chair, and Jim, maybe you want to read part of the resolution, and if both of you have anything you'd like to add, just come, this would be your time to come to the microphone.
Sure, just, so, the library, as the board, well, the library, the existing boiler is exceeded its useful life, it's over 25 years old, we knew that. Then, of course, we completed our energy audit and assessment, and also during the period of the last year, we've had the temporary aboveground oil tank, but we had studied and evaluated, and the cost-effective alternative at this time was to convert to natural gas, so the proposal before you is to replace the boiler and replace it with a new gas-fired boiler, and as you know, you had authorized utilizing the services of OLA Engineering, who we've had use previously, and the library has used, and they assisted us with the specifications, and what you have before you is the authorizing, the award to the one company that bid on the specifications prepared by OLA, and that one low bidder was at a cost of $373,600, and what you're authorizing is funding this project of $273,000 through fund balance, which takes into account that it's anticipated that we would receive $100,000 through a dormitory authority grant that the library director is working on. The library director and library board work real hard at seeking out grant funds, so thank you, Greg, for working on that. And so essentially, that's what, that's what you're authorizing. Additional background is, it was properly bid and noticed, we gave an extension when the Village hadn't received any bids, but we've done our background and due diligence on this one company, they're well-qualified, and my recommendation is that you approve this resolution authorizing the award of the project to Grunman Mechanical Systems out of Thornwood, New York, for the $373,600, and then authorizing the issuance of debt for what we can't get the grant for.
And do we, anyone, and I didn't mention, so people know your name, the library board chair is Christina Criticos, and our library director is Greg Rizeloff. So, if either of you have any comments, we unfortunately understand the need, we wish boilers didn't cost that kind of money, but it is what it is, and we just hope perhaps you've been so diligent on grants that maybe some grant monies would come, come our way, so, but if either of you would like to say anything, you're welcome to. Okay, wish we were buying, buying all of us something other than a boiler, but that's the way it is. All right, colleagues, do I have somebody a motion to move this? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Didn't, nobody bid on the replacement for our Village Hall boiler?
You know what, they didn't, and I have, so we rebid it, and those bids are due back on Wednesday.
We had no one.
No one, but why wouldn't OLA want to, if they're doing, if they, you know, bid for that one?
Well, they.
I think they bid for it at the same time, I mean.
You know what, well, maybe they will bid on it, let's, let's hope, I mean, again, that's why we recirculate, and OLA sent it to all those companies that typically work on these projects, so if not, we may rebid it again and do more, make more calls. Yep, new question.
All righty, we have another issue of the ending of useful life. I'm not sure I like that term, but it is our, our computer equipment here in Village Hall, and we need to replace some units that.
Try to stick to a four or five-year schedule, and we are making several purchases now, given some anticipated price increases for some of these equipments, so.
Good point. And it's, it's a $21,000 request to, to replace equipment that we need at Village Hall, and to your point, which is true, we're currently trying to capitalize on current prices for these computers, correct? We have.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to strike in the window that we have, thank you. That was our treasurer, Lori Boss, thank you, Lori. So, do I have a motion to approve these computer upgrades?
So moved.
And a second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, the next item is authorizing a purchase of, at a cost of $13,213, and this is for a manhole lifter, which is basically a piece of equipment that's, will get attached to the, to the pickup truck of the DPW, and actually use magnets to be able to assist in lifting the catch basins and the sewer manhole covers in the street up. And this was one of those initiatives that I, first and foremost, we always emphasize for all our staff, we want everyone to work safely, and we just talked about the catch basin cleaning effort with that, the existing system, this labor-intensive with the DPW employees, opening up those catch basins, there's a lot of risk, so here's a $13,000 piece of equipment, which as everyone knows, any simple medical bill would easily exceed that, but it was an initiative that the, that the foreman looked at, visited others, had the equipment brought here, very reasonable piece of equipment that will be safer for the guys to work, so that's the reason for this equipment, it wasn't previously in our capital plan, but I think for $13,000 and using our own. but I think for thirteen thousand dollars and using our own assigned fund balance, it's, it's a worthwhile purchase for equipment that's actually up to six hundred pounds that the guys are lifting manually, so.
All right, I will move that resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and the next item is our annual request to authorize transfers associated with the, with the budget. As usual, this part has two parts. One, it authorizes the treasurer and I to, to do some, a cleanup on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as the fiscal year comes to an end. And that authorizes us to make transfers from necessary accounts to keep the, the budget in balance. I don't know if we will have any transfers from outside or one department to another yet, but I'll be discussing that. But it does authorize that, and of course, as always, the board will get a full detail of the closeout of the budget for the year. And then you're also authorizing for the upcoming budget to make transfers within particular line items as may be needed within the department.
Treasurer, Boss, was there any particular line that we went over, or it's just, I know we do this yearly, so is this just a, okay.
There's nothing.
Okay.
There's nothing.
Okay.
There's nothing.
Okay. Okay. I know we do this yearly, just as a precaution, but I wanted to make sure there wasn't some particular line this year for some, I, I didn't realize.
No, nothing, nothing is, yeah.
Yeah. Right, right. Okay.
And, yeah, and to, and to that point, I do, yes, Lori just ran for me, a new report of the expenditures and revenues to date for the fiscal year, so I'll review those this week and get those out to you by Friday, so you can see where we stand. But as we, I think previously discussed, revenue wise, we're, we're well ahead of what we had budgeted for, is real positive, especially as, and I think I previously mentioned regarding building, building permit fees. Most recently, we did see a drop in sales tax, but again, we budgeted conservatively, so that'll come in real positively. But anyway, I will circulate those with some summaries, so. So nothing glaring there to, at this point.
All righty, and I need someone to move this one?
I'm moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. And I was going to have trustee Knapp do this next one, because it's appointing a new climate smart community task force with a coordinator. And in the past, our coordinator was our deputy village administrator, Steven Shallow. And now we have our current and wonderful, who's stepped in and done a terrific job, Thomas Morzello, will be our coordinator. So I think we just have to fix something on this resolution that has Steven, and we're just going to make sure it's Thomas. And Helen, would you like to?
Okay, so the, Bronxville's been part of the climate smart communities, I think going on almost four years now. It's a program established by, by New York that helps municipalities address climate change by identifying concrete steps that municipalities can take, you know, to aid in sustainability, reduce greenhouse gases, you know, just in general be more environmentally sustainable. So they've already identified, you know, many steps that have, you know, put us on this path of sustainability and reducing greenhouse gases. The committee meets regularly to advise the board of trustees on environmentally sustainable policies. It helps us prioritize goals when we're looking at different programs, helps us, you know, kind of do a cost benefit analysis on some of these options. And really with the idea of just reducing our, our footprint, our carbon footprint. So every year, we re-appoint the people who are on the task force. So the coordinator will be Thomas Morzello. We're so happy to welcome you to the village and, you know, have you taking on this really important role. You already really come up to speed so quickly. And I feel like you, you're all very enthusiastic about the work too, and how important it is, so that's great. So I'll just read the other people who are on the, the task force. I believe they're all continuing with, with one or two additions, with Ellen Edwards, the chair of the Bronxville Green Committee, myself as the village board liaison, Charles Mears, a member of the Bronxville Green Committee, Pam Lippi, Bronxville Green Committee, Maria Trejani, also from the Green Committee, Carol Upshure, who has been, all three of these women, particularly Carol, Maria, and Ellen Edwards, have appeared before this board many times, have been, you know, the heart and soul behind many of these initiatives, so we thank them for their continued service. Greg Hart, Thomas Breglia from New York Presbyterian. And then we're going to have two student representatives from the school who are to be named. So the resolution basically just appoints these people and reiterates that the mission is to, of the task force, is to liaise with the village board of trustees and the departments of the village to coordinate climate initiatives, to help develop strategies to implement sustainability goals and programs, and to work on climate change mitigation activities. So I will move it?
All righty, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. That ends the new business for the village trustees. Before I open it to anyone in the audience for any comment, did we forget anything?
I'd just like to make one observation, which is further to administrator Palmer's comments about cleaning the catch basins. Like many villagers, I go for an evening walk, and I happen to notice the two catch basins along the White Plains Post Road were, you could sort of look at them, and they were like full of leaves and debris, and debris, you could see just walking along. My wife and I got home probably about seven o'clock on Sunday evening. I sent an email to village administrator Palmer saying, you know, Jim, you know, this is like a catch basin, which, you know, could clog, you'd nearly all have problems on Route twenty-two, you know, put it on your list when you can get to it next week. As I was pulling out of my driveway to go to the parking lot, from train station to nine o'clock in the morning, on Monday morning, one of Victor Lima's teams was there unclogging that catch basin. Jim, I'd really expected it to be done by eight-thirty, but, you know, I give you an extra half hour grace period. Thanks again to your crew and to, to Victor Lima, and I, I think that all of us on the board have been getting so many compliments about just how great the, the village looks now, that all this construction in the downtown is, is over, and that was a big project, and I think it just came off beautifully, and that's the comment I'm getting from everyone I talk to.
And you know, that was one of my thoughts. We, we do a good job of, of thanking our wonderful policemen and, but downtown wouldn't have happened without all of your work. You were really the champion of, of what we're doing, and the coordinator, and the hours you spent, so we are going to, we're going to name Palmer Avenue after you. There.
Wow, I second that motion.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm going with that.
AKA, AKA speedy Palmer.
Speedy Palmer. But seriously, you, I know how hard you worked with the traffic engineers. I mean, this is going on in a good way for a year, trying to make sure everybody, everything was the right size. And then a huge thank you, and then a coordination with our, our garden clubs, who just stepped right in and helped a lot of those islands, which, you know, were helpful traffic wise, but didn't look pretty until we had some plantings. So huge effort, but a big thank you to you.
So if we're talking about downtown, we should mention that the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the sidewalk sale.
See.
On May thirtieth and thirty-first.
That's right.
So get your shopping done.
Helen?
Shop local.
Shop, gee, I never thought of that. All righty, and now I will open up to anybody in the audience who would like to talk about any topic. Good evening, my friend, if you just give name and address.
I'm Alexandra Valasentin with my husband Larry Donovan. I've lived on Duesenberry Road since nineteen eighty-nine, so almost thirty-six years. Previously, we also had a very small law practice here in the village, which we moved because they say you grow old with your clients. We were in a non-elevator building on the second floor, and an opportunity came in Scarsdale Eastchester for an elevator building. Also, it didn't help that our clients were constantly complaining about the parking situation, and Larry and Alex were constantly running down the stairs with quarters to the elevators. So, you know, so we, we were business owners here for a great, a great number of years, nineteen eighty-three until twenty-fourteen. And we're still in the unincorporated portion of the town. And as I said, we live on Duesenberry, and thank you, my husband ran into you.
Yes, I chalked to it.
And that's one of the two reasons that brings me here this evening. I took a walk on that beautiful Saturday afternoon we just had, and I met a lovely member of your Working Gardeners Club, a lovely young woman named Eva. Eva was at the dog field with her pickup truck that was filled with beautiful plants, and we struck up a conversation, and I said, are you donating all of these? And she said, yes, and she had her gloves and her tools, and she was not only donating them, but, and this was at about twelve-thirty in the afternoon, she was planting all of them. And she had a little plan, and she and, you know, Ben Lentz has also done yeoman's work there. I mean, it's a great and vast improvement over what it once looked like, and as I said, I'm there thirty-six years, so I've seen everything from the mulching site across the street, at the, what's now the nature field, you know, and now we've had, you know, the unfortunate flood zone, I'm happy to hear. It sounds like that mess of piping is going to be going, but I know it was necessary because of the flooding. But I said to Eva, you know, this is wonderful, you're doing this, but, and I said, we've had quite a bit of rain recently, but if we have a dry summer, what's going to happen to all of these plants? And she said, I know, she said, that's, that's an issue. So I said, well, gee, I said, I'm wondering why the village has the watering trucks, which always water, do a great job watering hanging baskets and all the gardening. Why maybe the village watering truck couldn't make its way up to the dog park and water some of those new plantings? I mean, they've all been donated, as you know. The village is the record property owner of that lot, you know, which is not, I know it's truly dedicated public park, but for all intents and purposes, it's a public park because people, not only in Bronxville, but from all over the area, come. And you see license plates from out of state, and, you know, people just, you know, love it. And, you know, it's a great resource, but it, it needs a little bit of help. And I think since the village is getting all of these free plantings and free labor, maybe once in a while it could, it could water. I think the residents in the area would appreciate it and all those who use it. So that's number one, and, you know, thank you all, because I know you all work very hard and for very little compensation. The other reason that brings me here is not quite as happy. I'm shopping locally, a lot less than I ever did before. I'm going into the village a lot less than I ever did before. I'm a senior citizen, the Pope and I were born the same year. I always say, you know you're getting old when you're the same age as your Pope. But this morning, something occurred, and I said, well, now I really have to go to this meeting. I dropped my husband a little before nine at a doctor's appointment at seventy-seven Pond Field, and I said to him, look, I just need a few things for dinner tonight, I'm going to go to Acme. I do not like to park in the municipal lot on Cedar Street, because I have had too many close calls as both a driver and as a pedestrian. People do not obey one-way signs, people are very aggressive drivers. I think the police chief has pointed that out since the pandemic on a couple of occasions. And also the, the lot itself, I had a misfortune of breaking my ankle about a year and a half ago, so now I'm a lot more cautious when I walk, but there's a lot of potholes, when it rains, they fill up, in the winter, they ice over, so I just don't like to park there. So where I try to always get a spot is by McGrath's, there are four spots opposite the Catholic Church and right in front of the side there of McGrath's on Cedar Street. So I was, I got out of the car with my fist full of quarters, and I was at the meter, and I heard a voice towering over me, I'm only five-three, behind me, and it was rather loud and rather close, and I don't know where this person came from, but it was a rather large woman who was clearly not a hundred percent fiable with mental capacity. And she was trying to start a conversation with me, and frankly, it was quite scary. And, you know, there were no police cars around, so I just, I, I'm not a person, by the way, who's afraid. I was raised in the city of New York. I was an assistant DA in the Bronx the first four years of my career, so, and I was in that borough at all hours of the day and night, and I just thought, you know, this is, this is not good. So I took a deep breath, and I, you know, had a little bit of a conversation, and then I kind of slowly made my way into Acme. I watched out Acme's window while this woman, still talking to herself, went up one side of the street, crossed, went down the other side. And, you know, I mean, we've all heard the stories in the city. I, I'm here to ask that the village consider reinstating the foot and the bicycle patrols in the village, because I told this story to a neighbor who had a similar experience while parked in her car, right here in front of Village Hall, waiting for pickup time to begin at Bronxville School. So, you know, it's the era that we live in, et cetera. I think what really has to happen here is we need police on bicycles and more of a police presence in the village to be a deterrent, because the cars going around, especially with the way the traffic is, it's just not sufficient. So I'm going to ask you to please speak to the police chief about the possibility of doing this. The, the traffic, you know, pedestrians, you know, nobody does the right thing, it seems. And it's, it's a little scary to be a senior citizen and to be driving and walking in the village, and then when something like this happens, I mean, I expect this when I go into the city to visit my daughter, I don't expect it here in Bronxville at nine-ten, nine-fifteen in the morning, I really don't. So, you know, I'm just here to ask that maybe you reconsider the foot patrols, the bicycle patrols. I think it would go a long way, and, you know, they would get to know maybe if there are people hanging out in the village who, you know, really maybe have some problems, maybe need any intervention. And the police are trained to do this, you know, we're not as citizens. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Alex.
And for all the good activities that are coming up.
Thank you. I do know we're starting our, a community policing next week, is it? I thought I, I read that in our, Alex, so we are going back to the foot patrol, the bicycle, and that will be, I'm positive it's next week through September. And I understand totally what you're saying. You know, we, we've had a couple issues, and honestly, the police are well aware of the few folks that, we have one woman, but they can't ask her, they can't force her to do anything. But, you know, they are aware of, of who's in the village, and I think the foot patrol next week will, will.
So it's only going to be in the, it sounds like the warm weather months.
At this juncture, yes.
We have been under, you know, full complement of our officers also, so that's kind of hampered also our ability to have multiple people out on foot.
We had a couple of not-quite-expected retirements, and then a couple of career-ending injuries, and it really did throw off a small department, so you're absolutely right.
We're working to get that in the next step of the game.
Back up, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great feedback to get, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Alex. All right, anyone else? No? All right, seeing no one, I have a motion to close our main meeting.
I'm moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, I never know, what's our due And again, I never know, what's our June date?
I wrote that down, June 9th.
We'll be back here on June the 9th. Thank you.